Hold the meeting to order, roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Ammon. Nelson.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Docken.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the consent items. Motion been made in second at discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. A hearing to rezone from R2 to general business. Bruce?
Mayor Calvin, members of the council. The public hearing tonight is to consider a request to rezone the former Dairy Queen site from an R2 residential status to a general business, GB general business, status. The property has existed for years as a nonconforming property and nonconforming use. The parcel itself is adequately sized, but the use was never permitted in the residential district. Because that use has terminated its function at that location, the owners of the property would like to be able to market it as a commercial property. We've had several inquiries to date, but have had to reject them due to this zoning of the site. The planning commission has reviewed the matter, conducted a public hearing on the rezone request, and recommends to the council that the site be rezoned as proposed. Staff would offer that recommendation from the commission.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak? Seeing none, council?
I'll make a motion to rezone it.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Peterson? Councilmember Nelson?
Just a clarification, is it just the one lot, or is it the lot in the house to the west?
It is just the lot.
It's just the lot that the Dairy Queens are?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
And the action required tonight is to adopt the ordinance, assign it a number, and publish it.
Any other discussion? Roll call, Kevin?
Councilmember Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes, or the ordinance passes. Next we'll receive a report from Connie Schmal on the business and retention and expansion program. And thank you for being here Connie, and looking forward to your report.
Good evening Mayor Calvin and members of the Wilmer City Council. Thank you for allowing me to come tonight and give a report on our business retention and expansion survey that we did for Candy Ohio County. This survey was initiated by the Candy Ohio County and City of Wilmer Economic Development Commission, of which I am a staff member for the last 14 months. In addition, we were partnered in our initiation by the Wilmer Lakes Area Chamber of Commerce Grow Minnesota team. And it took the efforts of both of our committees to work together to bring this project to fruition. Some of you on the council were involved. Dennis Anderson I think did some of the visits, Steve Ammon did some. And there's businesses and volunteers in our audience as well, so thank you for all those who are part of this survey. During the months of November and December in 2014, actually only a five-week period during that time, 60 different volunteers went out and visited 82 different businesses. We wanted to tell our existing businesses how valuable they are to the community, and we wanted to test and ask about our environment. How conducive are we as an environment and a community in allowing our businesses to grow and develop and expand and do well in our community? The objectives including demonstrating local support for our businesses, help solve immediate business concerns, increase our local businesses' ability to compete in the global economy, establish and implement a strategic plan for economic development, and build capacity for growth and sustainment. Of the businesses we visited and did a survey, the survey took about an hour, people went out in groups of two, and each team of two did three to four businesses. We did retail and service industries, we did 60 different businesses, and 22 different manufacturing businesses. Out of the 82 businesses we surveyed, 69% of them were Wilmer businesses. In February, we had a group of about 50 people come together to take the survey data and analyze it, take a look at it, make some statements about it, pull out what we saw were common themes. We did a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And from there, we picked out some projects that we thought would be helpful to make a difference for the businesses in our community. First thing I'm going to go over for you, you have a handout that has the findings in it, but I'm just going to bring up some highlights from those findings. In the area of leadership, our survey respondents felt there is very, there is stability and engagement among their peers, among the other people in their, that are business leaders in the community. Some say the community leadership is forward-thinking, and that compared to other cities, Wilmer has less regulation and zoning requirements. Some issues of concern, surveyed businesses were not as satisfied with leadership and community planning, zoning, taxes, and permits, and that of course is no surprise, we hear that a lot. And there were some comments about our leadership and some trust in our community. And I would encourage you each to take a look at the survey book afterwards and see the individual responses, as well as your findings. In the area of business growth and expansion, the majority of business leaders report an increase in sales for their business, and this is great for our communities. We have planned expansion and in future investment into our county for both CRT, S, which is convention, retail, tourism, and service industries, and in manufacturing. We have opportunity, in fact, that many of our businesses are selling nationally and globally. And in the list of different countries that we sell to, or even have a presence in, there was about 40 or 50 different countries that were listed in this survey alone. Location, the data reports show that we have benefits in rural living and our recreational opportunities with our lakes, our parks, and our trails, that came up quite often. The study recognizes the importance and impact of our agricultural roots and our cluster of agribusinesses. In addition, Wilmer is recognized as a regional center. Several of the smaller cities in Candy Ohio County experience a loss of key business services, including gas stations, grocery stores, and restaurants. In my job with the EDC, I am visiting frequently with the city councils and EDAs in the cities outside of Wilmer, and I'm often hearing that story, we need our grocery stores back, we need to maintain our grocery stores, our gas stations. We don't have that experience here in Wilmer. Again, we're seen as that regional hub, and we have that strength. When asked what their customers are looking for, business leaders say they could use more options for shopping, entertainment, and dining. And I couldn't believe it, but repeatedly in the survey, people said they wanted to see a Kohl's, and they wanted to see Olive Garden. And of course, the EDC is working on that. Government legislation and regulations, in November and December, again, we've come away since then and things are decided, but our business leaders feared there would be increases in taxation and in regulations, especially at the state and federal level. And taxes at their current reading, current rate are leading some of our manufacturers to consider moving to neighboring states, which are more conducive to business, is what they said. Service and retail business leaders were holding hope that taxation and regulation laws could change for the better, especially in healthcare reform, and I think we actually saw that happen in our legislative session. In diversity, we have strength and opportunities for business development, growth, and an increased workforce because of our immigrant base and history. There's a great possibility for continued increase in immigration of different culture groups in the Wilmer area. But there remains much work to be done to become a community as perceived as embracing the diversity that we have. That was repeated over and over in the survey. Internet access and speed was one of the things that was all over the board, seeing as we need improvement. The survey data reviews inconsistent speed, quality, and access to broadband for businesses. The legislative session was very disappointing in that area, hopefully it's something that will be looked at again. It is also something that the EDC is working on continually. In transportation, the survey reveals beneficial resources for businesses in the area of transportation in their access to rail, airport, and highways. Local business leaders expressed a great need for four-lane access to St. Cloud and to the Twin Cities would help their businesses tremendously. And service providers said their main challenge was getting people in for appointments. Taxi service and even the transit service we have are not always conducive for people making their appointments. In workforce, business leaders report they see a significant workforce change going on, and they'll see that change in the next 10 years tremendously. They're experiencing retirements, increased diversity in their workforce, new staff bringing in higher skills, and younger staff. The survey reports repeatedly that the people in our area have a strong work ethic and a diverse skill set. Workforce evaluations numbers showed strength in workforce quality, stability, and productivity. However, they consistently evaluated availability of workforce much lower. People are struggling with enough workforce for their business places. And that's not just here, it's happening throughout the state and in other states too. We've seen reports all over the papers about that. Work opportunities exceed our workforce availability. The report shows at least three different positions that are currently difficult to fill. And that list includes skilled people, unskilled, technical, scientific, supervisor, and doctorate positions, so it's every level. Next, the projects that are planned and in progress that we talked about, very quickly I'll go through that. Many of them are about workforce, three out of the seven are about workforce issues. But project number one is identifying, engaging, and inspiring our currently underutilized workforce. Again, these projects are identified, we're still trying to figure out how they meet up with other initiatives that go up in our community. We don't want to be duplicating what we do, we want to work with the initiatives that are already out there. We're finding that Vision 2040 is already working on a lot of these things, we want to partner with them and make it a stronger push for doing something in these areas. Project two is, the goal of project two is that the larger region will recognize the Wilmer Lakes area, Candy Ohio County, and the City of Wilmer as a community that embraces diversity. Goal number one of Vision 2040 is really working hard on that. One of the items that were mentioned is a possibility is doing an event, and an event is in the planning under goal one, so we've joined with them in their efforts. Project number three is excellence in our schools. You didn't hear anything about that in the findings, but if you look through the report, you'll see some things in there. Number four, we're stabilizing our workforce now and into the future. Goal number two of Vision 2040 is working on economic development issues and workforce, so we are partnering with them again and pulling out some project possibilities. Project five is marketing our areas a place of job opportunities and lifestyle, and I'm happy to report the EDC is working on a brand-new website. We're going to be doing a lot to showcase City of Wilmer, Candy Ohio County, and the other cities in Candy Ohio County. Broadbanding and expansion and availability in Candy Ohio County is a goal. We have a committee of about 25 people involved at the EDC and trying to do something about broadband. The survey that we did is going to be a strong help in writing some grants when that money is available. And last but not least is increased availability of job-qualified workers, both short-term training and diploma programs, whatever we can do to help the workforce needs that we have currently in our community. So again, I want to thank you for your support of the EDC and of Vision 20, which is going to be a strong partner for us in moving these projects forward. I want to publicly thank the Wilmer Lakes Area Chamber of Commerce Grow Minnesota team. We could not have pulled off this survey without the help of their experienced people who do business surveys already, along with Ammon and the people that we pulled in, it was 60 volunteers and 82 businesses. That's a lot of people in our community who are involved, and we're very grateful.
Great, thank you, excellent report. Comments from the council? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you Connie, and all of the staff and everybody that worked so hard on this, and I know you really did put your heart and soul into it. So we've got these five, or seven, I'm sorry, seven project things. Are you monitoring the progress somehow, or is there going to be some sort of update as this goes forward so the community can kind of understand, you know, how, what we have accomplished and what we have yet to do, or what are your thoughts on?
Certainly, yes. There were three different steps to the process, and the first was the research step, which was doing the surveys. The second was analyzing the data and pulling out some project ideas. The third is implementing those projects, and we know that that's going to take, that might be ongoing. It's going to take a good year for sure to get some of the projects underway. So we're currently deciding how we're going to do those projects, who we're going to partner with. Once we've made some decisions on that, and we know what the committee looks like that's going to be working on the projects, we'll take that information public again to the people, the businesses that were involved, and the volunteers that were involved, and probably some of our city and county people as well.
Great. This is really exciting, thank you.
Yeah, and you're welcome to join those committees, so give me a call if you say, hey, this is one of the goals I want to be working on.
Connie, just on, you know, I sat through a couple of your different presentations, and you have an excellent report here, and I really encourage people to get out and look at it. Is it available on the website? Is it out in place?
It is not on their website, but there's no reason I can't get it on there right away.
It might be a good idea, because it's an excellent report, and Councilmember Ammon was involved in it as well, and I know that he did some of the site visits, and I know that he did show up and we did talk about our goal-setting and stuff that morning, so I want to publicly thank him for his service on that as well. He's unable to be here this evening. I want to thank you and all the work you put into it. 69% of the businesses were from Wilmer, and it's exciting to hear that we have a lot of people looking for employees, because a lot of times we hear people are looking for jobs, they can't find anything. We have a lot of good, high-skill jobs right here in Wilmer that people are looking for employees to fill those spots. So thanks for the excellent report, and thanks for the good work you do.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next we have the open forum. To start off the open forum, we did, council received an email late this afternoon from a citizen who was unable to attend the meeting, but wanted to have a letter read during the open forum. So I've taken the liberty to ask Kevin Halliday to read that letter into the record. People were unable to be here, but they are civic-minded people, and I thought it was a good letter that should be read into the record.
This letter comes from Arlen Christiansen. Dear Mr. Mayor and City Council members, my name is Arlen Christiansen, and I reside at 1121 Becker Avenue Southwest in Wilmer. And my wife and I have been in Wilmer, homeowner, for over 30 years. Before I start, I would like to clarify for the record that I may have the same last name as Mr. Christiansen, and even spell it the same way, but we are not related in any way. I want to thank you for your willingness to be a, to be public officials. I understand the stress and headaches that often come with a job, with what is transpiring in Wilmer now, I don't have to tell you about stress. I wanted to say thank you for doing a job which is not an easy one, but needs to be done, and sometimes you may have to step in and oversee decisions to protect the interest of the citizens you represent. My wife and I are coaches for the sports team in Wilmer for people with disabilities. Our team vision is we all work together as a team, and no matter the outcome, we hold our head high as we did our best. I would urge not only the council to try to live by this, but also the Recall-Ron Committee to think about this. United we stand by our council, divided our city fails, as the city is becoming divided. These council members and mayor, we voted in by the majority, and thus most of the citizens feel that we have the best candidate in office. I know the city charter has provisions for this process, and it is everyone's right to start such proceedings. I am happy I live where we are as citizens and have the right to such a recall process, but in this case, I hope that the recall effort fails. This bothers me because I voted for the best candidate in November, and now people are trying to tell me I made a mistake, and they want it to over the election. This city is in a state of turmoil. Neighbors versus neighbors, friends versus friends. It doesn't matter what side of town you live on, people are having disagreements on both sides of the Recall-Ron effort, and I say where it is going, where is it going to stop? The rumor is that Mr. Christiansen is just the first of many to possibly be recalled. People we need to try and get along for the best interest of our city. I was at a graduation party this past Saturday out of town, and one of my relatives told me about a school bond referendum that passed in her small town, and it was a very close vote. She told me that it has divided the town, that people don't talk to you unless they know what side of the vote you are on. This is sad, and I am afraid this is what could happen, or what is happening in Wilmer. I understand that if they recall, if the recall is successful, it is because of the majority of Ward 2 residents feel it is time for a change, majority rules. However, it only seems to apply if it is on the side of the Recall Committee, because the committee can't seem to accept the fact that when the council takes a vote on any certain issue, it passes or fails on a majority vote, and that my friends is what democracy is all about. Mr. Christiansen, keep watching out for my tax dollars, and hold your head up and be proud of your service to residents in Ward 2. Thank you for your time and consideration.
This was a family, a couple that was unable to be at the meeting, and so I made the decision as the presider of the meeting to have that read into record. That is not going to be the normal process that we do of allowing letters read in, but I felt that with the service that they've lived here 30 years, with the service they've done to our community, I felt that was important. With that, we will go to the open forum, and first we have Betty Knudsen.
Good evening. My name is Betty Knudsen, I live at 722 Second Street Southwest here in Wilmer. I have been a taxpaying citizen of this community since the fall of 2002. For some of you on this council, that is a strike against me. Since I'm being open with my comments, I shall also say that I'm a woman, I have a college degree but not a master's degree. I'm absolutely appalled at the actions that this council has taken in the last several months, and the rumored actions that you are thinking of taking. You were all elected by the citizens of this community. We as citizens of this community all have the right to be heard. The last time I checked, this is a free nation, and under the Constitution, we have the right to be heard. I don't always agree with what is said at the council, or what is said at the open forum. I do believe that if you decide to run, declare to run for council, that you should not use the open forum as a free political campaign. But limiting the times you speak in a year is outrageous. Who are you trying to silence? Your critics? Who are you trying to bully? We teach not to bully in school. Why is it right for schools, but not for council? As some of you have said, the past is done, live with it. I don't believe that is right. We may never get the truth of your actions, but as citizens of this community, we need to be heard. Since when do you as council members have the right to shut up the citizens of this community, just because you don't like what is being said? The rumors, the slanders, the backstabbing, the mocking of citizens of all ethnic backgrounds, and the backroom, secret backroom meetings that are being done by a few of you have tarnished this community. The good old boys' club must be put to bed. I'm tired of seeing you bash the backbone industries of this town. Without them, we would not be a town. I'm also upset by the way of your so-called friends or co-conspirators are threatening the citizens of this community. We will not stand for it, we need to work together. A large national organization that fights for the rights of federal employees tells their members, silence is acceptance. The citizens of this community will not be silenced because you don't like what is being said. As was said not too long ago at a council meeting, live with it. You need to live with the fact that the citizens of Wilmer will not be silenced. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Knudsen. Steve Gardner.
Steve Gardner, 2645 19th Avenue Southwest. Mr. Mayor. Last week, the Labor Committee met and discussed limiting the ability of citizens to address the city council at its meetings. As is common these days, it appears to me some members would wish to bring forward a draconian proposal without discussing it with the balance of the council. Rather than talking this through at a retreat or a work session, I fully anticipate that tonight, a member who says he is the most affected by recent comments at the public forum will offer up a motion to severely limit public comment and stifle the public's ability to be heard. As a former member of this body who was the recipient of numerous negative comments during the West Winds issue, up to and including death threats, I ask through the mayor, council members, where was your concern then? During the election last fall, Bob Inus and Bob Score used the public forum as their own bully pulpit to enhance their campaigns for council and mayor, a direct violation of the rules then and still in effect. I ask through the mayor, council members, where was your concern then? At the last council meeting, the vast majority of commenters at the public forum were in support of Councilmember Christiansen. I ask through the mayor, council members, where was your concern then? Was that the three-ring circus the council member identified at last week's committee meeting? I'm guessing not. Some speech after all seems more acceptable than others. The truth is, you already have the rules in place that you need to have a fair and effective public forum. And I thank you Mayor Calvin for enforcing those rules. Placing severe limits on citizen comments will cause further mistrust of the council, and will likely result in great electoral harm to those of you who support the suppressing of free speech and the prevention of open dialogue. If you can't accept criticism, don't like hearing opinions other than your own, if you can't take the heat, then get out of the kitchen and resign. Finally, speaking as the subject of a tasteless comment by a still unidentified council member at a Labor Committee meeting several weeks ago, it seems that your message is, the council can do or say anything it wants, even if it's illegal. I have repeatedly asked for a public apology in this matter, I will not ask again, but rather, I will consult legal counsel going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner.
Jeanne Christiansen, 1912 Richland Avenue Southwest. Reading the West Central Tribune this morning, once again, there was an attack on members of our city council. I come to you tonight to share with you how this Recall Group works. They not only have our newspaper working for them and supporting them, but they also have abused the use of the public forum to campaign for their cause and their agenda, asking for signatures for petitions and donations to their committee. The morning of my husband's mother's funeral, we received a call that they had posted a video clip along with the name Christiansen in bold print, accusing him of calling one of their members an idiot at a committee meeting, and shared it throughout the social media, even to some of you sitting here tonight. Even though Ron didn't say this, they continue to accuse him of this action without any facts to prove that this is true. Due to a call to their campaign manager, who said he wasn't aware of the video, they removed it from their website. One of their members also wrote an editorial, saying, "It isn't personal, but we are just following the process of recall." I beg to differ. It is personal, constantly attacking Ron and our family with lies, false accusations, and mean-spirited intentions. I also found it interesting that one of their members had an editorial in the paper before the video was even on the City of Wilmer website, and he wasn't even at the meeting. I was there, and I knew what was really said. Another twist of information. Have any of you ever been elected to public office? If so, then you know it is a thankless job. Many meetings, sometimes long hours, and minimal pay. I am very disappointed in this group, whom I consider some to be my friends, who are now dividing the city through their actions. If you are a member of this Recall Group who continues to spread lies and false allegations toward Councilman Christiansen, then I say to you, shame on you. Ron is a dedicated public servant, he is passionate about the City of Wilmer, give him some credit where credit is due for what he has done for the city.
Mayor.
Who needs an apology but doesn't stand up here every week and asking for one?
Thank you for your time.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Jeanne. Robert, Bob Inus. I'm sorry, Mrs. Christiansen.
Good afternoon, Bob Inus.
Bob Enos, 905 Trout Avenue Southwest. One of the problems that I think that we have right now with this recall movement, which I'm not here to talk about, is that, much like in sports or in rules of warfare, sometimes when you want to bring attention to one issue over here, you're doing that as a distraction so that we don't focus on the other issue that's sitting right over here. In the last few months, there have been reports around the country that Minnesota is now the number-one relocation, secondary migration destination for political refugees in the United States. That's a new twist to immigration and to relocation here. Right now, new immigrants coming, political refugees coming into the United States primarily come in through California. What's happened now is that there is such a critical mass of community, of political refugees in Minnesota, that that now in and of itself has become a magnet for refugees in other parts of the country who have had their initial settlements, say, in Georgia or in Texas, wherever, to learn that there's a community that might be more embracing or might be more familiar, so they're making that secondary migration route now to Minnesota. About six months ago, there was a meeting out here at the county offices. The head of the state Refugee Relocation Program asked the head of Family Services for the county to organize a meeting of officials and interested stakeholders, as she called it, to discuss this new wave of secondary migration to Minnesota and specifically to Wilmer. There were about twenty people in attendance at that meeting. Interestingly enough, some, an issue that's that important didn't get one piece of play in the local newspaper, an issue that will transform Wilmer like nothing else that happens in this city probably for the next fifty years. Not one piece of ink was in the newspaper about this. The agencies and businesses that were represented at that meeting included the County Welfare Office, the Wilmer School Department, Jennio. It also had two representatives from the city. Ordinarily, we would expect those representatives to be a city council member. I don't believe any of you attended such a meeting back in November. I don't think so. Or we would have expected Mary Janisch, perhaps, to attend that meeting as a local representative. He wasn't there either. Who was there, Mr. Calvin?
I was there.
And Charlene Stevens was there. What they were there to talk about was the impact that this secondary migration would have on a community of this size in terms of infrastructure demands, educational demands, real estate, housing, you name it. Why didn't we hear about any of that?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Enos. Lori.
Hi, I'm Lori Tossenson, and I'm a volunteer with the Community Volunteer Group for our Dog Park Committee, and I just would like to address the mayor and the city council, and thank you for the opportunity to... The Dog Park Committee will have a presentation available for your Public Works Utility Meeting on June ninth, so I just want to make that aware to everyone, and thank you for the opportunity for the Dog Park Committee to do that. And if you have any questions, you can let us know, but we will be ready to present to the Public Works Committee. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate that. Okay, that's all we have. Kevin? Okay, next we have our Public Works, Public Safety Committee Report. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did meet on Tuesday, May 26, at 4:45 p.m. at City Hall. During the public comments section, nobody was there, so we went on to item number three, which is our police update. Our chief comes to our meetings every other Tuesday and gives us a report on the number of incidences the last two weeks. The jail census for that day was one hundred and forty-eight, and ninety-two of those inmates were from the Department of Corrections. Fifty-five were from the, from Candy High County, and one was from Chippewa County. The calls for service for the previous two weeks totaled eight hundred and fifty-seven. The majority of these calls were for traffic stops, followed by public assists and suspicious people or suspicious vehicles. Told calls for service for the police department this year is three hundred and sixty-two ahead of last year. There was a brief discussion on an increase in family service cases handled by the detective unit and another expected increase due to reporting regulations by the state. Item number four is a resolution. Staff presented to us for approval of project number 1405, change order number one in the amount of $5,800 for the industrial park fourth addition. The project was awarded to R&R Excavated and including, included the construction of new streets, utilities, and industrial lots. Some minor work was required to remove a concrete structure encountered while installing the sanitary sewer, and also additional excavating for field elevation and reinstalling some of these hydrants. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to approve project number 1405, change order number one, to R&R Excavating in the amount of $5,800.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion. Resolution, roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Blauman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes.
Our next item, number five, had to do with the facilities plan for lift station replacement. This is a progress update. This is for information only. Once again, staff presented to the Committee for Information the progress update on the facilities plan for lift station replacements. Our facilities plan provided by Donahue and Associates details a lift station needs assessment for replacing four existing lift stations over the next five years. The purpose of this plan is to satisfy requirements of Chapter 707, 7.0272, which is a facilities plan for wastewater treatment systems, and receive MPCA approval. Wilmer intends to apply for funding under the state revolving loan funding administered by the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority. Tonight, we have with us Sandy Kimmler of Donahue and Associates, and she has about a fifteen-minute presentation to give to us on this update for the facilities plan, lift stations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Before you start, Sandy, I just wanted to point out that we're hoping that the projector works. We have a new one ordered. It should hopefully be installed by the next council meeting. If it does not continue to work, we'll just have you go through your report verbally.
Okay, and I heard about the projectors, so I do have...
So you understand. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm here to talk a little bit about the facilities plan that will be submitted to MPCA. I'll touch briefly on all the sections and just give a little information about each one. Let's see if this works. The Wilmer wastewater collection system serves this area that's shown here. It's the city of Wilmer, Eagle Lake Sanitary District and the Lake District. And the collection system includes about a hundred miles of gravity sewer, force mains, twenty-four lift stations. Fifteen of those lift stations are owned by the city of Wilmer, and nine are owned by Eagle Lake. All are maintained and operated by the city of Wilmer. And the facilities plan deals with these four lift stations, Fairgrounds, Armory, Gordon Avenue, and Westwood Court, and two associated force mains that are all slated for replacement. This is the location of the stations in question. I'll briefly go through each project. The Fairgrounds lift station is located just south of the Fairgrounds, the Candy High Fairground property. It's one of Wilmer's oldest stations. It was constructed in 1930. It's the only one of the four stations that we're talking about that actually has an above-ground structure over the dry well. The pumps are thirty years old and need repair. Basically, the lift station and the mechanicals are at the end of their reliable operating life. The building itself needs a new roof. It needs paint. The pumps are leaking. But even if we repaired all of those things, there's still safety issues associated with this station, as well as the other three stations. If you see where the arrow is pointing to the wet well, that's where maintenance operators need to access equipment down there, and it's very difficult to get in. They can't even get their access equipment back there, like the harnesses and the lifts and stuff. So it's a dangerous situation, and so it's kind of like, why throw good money at repairing the pumps and the building if you've still got these safety issues? The Armory lift station is located in the High Avenue right-of-way. This is a can-type station that was constructed in 1975. The pumps are leaking. They need to be either repaired or replaced. But there's also safety issues with this station because the wet well is located in the middle of the road. During rainfall events or snow melts, the wet well is underwater, can't really be accessed. It's causing problems in the pavement of the road. And even this part of the lift station where the controls are is very close to traffic lanes, so every time you know you need maintenance or repairs on there, the folks are close to traffic. The Gordon Avenue lift station is located on the south side of Gordon Avenue in the road right-of-way. The station was, we don't, we're not sure when it was constructed, but it's already been upgraded twice, once in 1956, once in 1977. The steel structure that you see there has serious corrosion problems. The wet well is the underground structure next to it. You can just see the manhole, and that's an old brick structure. The bricks are starting to crumble. There's mortar that's missing. This lift station is also located very near a traffic lane. And the last lift station is the Westwood Court lift station. It was constructed in 1972. The wet well is actually located in the road in Fifteenth Avenue Northwest. It's just east of the Community College, so it's a rather busy street. When they need to get in here for maintenance, it's kind of dangerous. This is also a, this lift station also has a capacity issue. It's nearing the end of its capacity. There's some new development that's been happening in this part of Wilmer, and so the lift station is becoming too small. This lift station floods. The structure behind the road is a control panel and electric panel. Water has got up that high in the past, so this lift station needs to be increased in size and also needs to be more capacity and at a higher elevation. Sort of tied into this lift station, you can see the Westwood Court lift station on the left side and the radio station on the right side. Right now, radio station pumps to Country Club, and then it pumps to Lakeland Drive and then to the old facility, and then makes its way out to the new facility. Do you still call it a new facility in Wilmer? But there's been a recommendation when the Country Club lift station was designed to take some of that flow and head west to the Westwood Court lift station and then just pump directly into the interceptor that goes out to the new plant. This allowed the Country Club lift station to be smaller, and it also provides for growth to the areas north of here, so this force main is part of the Westwood Court lift station So really, what we're talking about is pumps and mechanicals and buildings that are failing, and it's not a matter of it would be nice to replace it, but there's really a risk of not replacing it, and the consequences would be no sewer service to those areas. Eventually, basement backups and sanitary sewer overflows to the environment. That's the reason for doing the project. So we looked at two alternates for these lift stations for replacements. One is a package submersible lift station. This is the Sperryville lift station that was just constructed recently in Wilmer, and this is the type of station we'd be talking about for alternate number one. It consists of precast concrete structures for wet well and valve vault. It's got an above-ground control panel with a little roof canopy over the control panel. The advantages are, it's a relatively small footprint, so you don't need a lot of property to place this on. Relatively short time to construct this, so there's less traffic impacts and less impacts to the residents in the area, and it's very cost-effective. The disadvantages are, it's not easy to access. You still need to lift up a hatch to get into the system. We build them a lot safer than the old ones used to be. It's also a little bit harder than an above-ground station to perform maintenance activities. Alternate number two is a custom lift station, where you'd actually build the concrete structures out in the field and then place a building over that. So obviously, the ease of maintenance, just walking into a building and down the steps, that's an advantage. These types of stations are often used when you need really high-flow stations, typically larger than 500 gallons per minute. The disadvantages are, it's a, it's a large building, so you can't put it just on a small tract of land or an easement. It's more expensive, and it takes longer to build. We did consider five alternates. The other ones are just variations of the two that I've explained, different types of materials, you know, steel wet well instead of a concrete wet well or an above-ground building without a staircase, but there were no advantages to these. The other thing we looked at for each site was environmental impacts, so there were no wetland impacts to any of these sites, no known environmental contamination sites, no archaeological sites. We will recommend that the lift stations be designed so that the valve vault is above the hundred-year-high water elevation, and erosion control measures will be implemented during construction so that any sediments will be kept out of the local lakes and streams. These are the costs of the two different alternates for the four lift stations and the force main. The force main costs are obviously the same for each. This includes engineering costs, but it does not include any cost for property acquisition, and there's a 30% contingency on these numbers. So as you can see, the cost of the custom lift stations are quite a bit more than the package lift station. This is the recommended plan in the facility plan. We're recommending four package submersible lift stations for the Fairgrounds, Armory, Gordon Avenue, and Westwood Court sites, along with the Fairgrounds force main and the radio station force main. These are the costs of alternate one, so we have Fairgrounds at $489,000, Armory at $430,000, Gordon Avenue at $420,000, Westwood Court at $691,000, the Fairgrounds force main at $114,000, and radio station at $301,000. All of these costs were included in the recently approved capital improvements plan, so it's all been worked into the budget, and the costs that we came up with independently are fairly close to what was in the capital improvements plan. We have one or two stations that are slightly higher, a couple that are slightly lower, but all well within the ballpark. The reason we did the facilities plan, as was explained in the introduction, was that the city determined that they could apply for the state revolving fund for the lift station projects, and at first, it didn't seem like it would be practical to do that because you'd need a facilities plan for every single lift station and force main, but we talked to MPCA, and they said we could just do one facilities plan, and then as you build these stations in the next five years, that facilities plan would still be valid, and you can therefore apply for the funding using that facilities plan. So that's really why it was decided to go this route. Any questions?
Counselor.
Councilmember Anderson. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report. It was very interesting. You say this is in the capital improvement plan. Is it over, like, starting in 16 or...
Starting in 2016 is the first construction date, and I believe it runs through 2019.
Okay, all right. That's what I was wondering. Thank you.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for coming tonight. It's an expensive project. So do, how much more property do we have to purchase in our easements?
Good question. For Fairgrounds, the city owns that land. You wouldn't need to purchase anything. For Westwood Court, you would need to acquire probably some of the adjacent agricultural land.
Across the road to the north?
To the north, right. It's on the same side of the road, just to get it out of the low spot. Armory, there's a city park across, no, Gordon... Armory, there's a city park across, no, Gorton Avenue, there's a city park across the street that could probably be utilized. Armory could be a little bit of an issue because the railroad is the adjacent property, so if you can't get a railroad easement, you may need to do something creative and just put underground structures in the right-of-way. That would all be looked at when those facilities are designed.
Thank you.
Did I hear you correctly that there's 30% contingency in the project? Okay. I thought that's what I heard in this.
Right, and we did get equipment prices and things like that, but there's, you know, there's unknowns that when you're in this part, when you're in conceptual design, so we just put 30% in to cover any of that, and we never want to be the low bidder, so...
Okay. Thank you for your report. Councilmember Christensen.
Kevin.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I've been informed, and we don't have the resolution before us, but we do need a resolution to direct Donahue to submit the facilities plan to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency on the city's behalf. We didn't realize that step was needed.
Okay, so moved. Second. There's been a motion made and seconded, and this would be a resolution, incorrect?
Yes, sir.
Additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
...had an add-on for the alternative. Would you just address that one more time?
Councilmember Nelson, members of the council, I don't always have the best answers for why contractors bid the way they do. They only know that answer. However, I can tell you that each contractor puts together numbers they feel would both win the project or be awarded the project as well as make them some money on top of that comment. So, I don't know why one is a deduct and the others are add-ons. I can only speculate.
Finance Director Olkens, had you wanted to make a comment? I've seen you grab the mic there, so, okay.
No, Mr. Mayor. All I wanted to inform the council is this was budgeted in 2014. It's a carryover on the Capitol. And Sean, Mr. Christensen was right on the dollar mark.
Additional discussion? Audrey, were you wanting to make a comment?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Item number eight was to accept a bid and award contract for utility improvements to 313 Fourth Street Southwest. This is a resolution. Once again, staff brought to the committee for approval acceptance of this bid from Land Pride Construction for the utility improvements at 313 Fourth Street Southwest. Quotes were solicited for the Fire and Water Service installation of the property, commonly known as Foxhole Brewery. Four quotes were received, with the lowest being Land Pride Construction, in the amount of $24,758. We had allotted and bonded for $30,000 for this project, and it is 100% assessed. The capitalization needs of the organization were discussed, and a concern was voiced of supporting enterprises in this manner. The process has been followed previously and is allowed per state statute. After some discussion, a motion is made seconded for the...seconded and passed for the following resolution, and I will introduce the resolution to accept the bid from Land Pride Construction for the utility improvements in the amount of $24,758, and authorize the mayor and administrator to execute the necessary documents.
Second.
The resolution has been introduced and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Item number nine was the dog fence construction at Lyons Park. We tabled this particular item. Staff did bring to us for approval the construction of a fence for the new dog park at Lyons Park by Andy's Fenceall. Part of the park development plan includes the creation of a dog park at Lyons Park. One quote was received of the fence to construct chain links fence, commercial grade, by Andy's Fenceall. The amount was $21,495.55. We have budgeted $150,000 for the CIP for park development and included the purchase of the construction of the fence. The committee discussed whether the dog park had been approved, and if it should be considered park development. More information was requested from the involved parties, including the KC Dog Club. Once again, this motion was tabled. Item number 10, had to do with Swanson Field scoreboard replacement. This is also a resolution. Staff brought to us for approval, replacing the scoreboard at Swanson Field by Daktronics in the amount of $17,236. This particular scoreboard is scheduled for replacement, and one quote was received from Daktronics for an outdoor aluminum LED baseball and softball scoreboard through the Minnesota Service Cooperative Contract. The purchase would also be deducted from the $150,000 budgeted for park development in the CIP. Our committee discussed whether the scoreboard should be considered park development, and the importance of this field, as it is used more frequently, and the purchase would be an obligation to those teams. We also discussed that the Stingers are taking a lot of time at the Taunton Field, forcing our other baseball team, Legion VFW, at Surtta to use Swanson Field, and we felt it was necessary to replace that scoreboard, being fair to them. After some discussion, a motion was made seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to approve the replacement of that scoreboard at Swanson Field by Daktronics in the amount of $17,236.
Second. The resolution has been introduced and seconded. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the past, we always try to get a sponsor for the scoreboard. Are we going to try that this time, or?
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, Councilman Fagerly, we are cost-sharing the cost of this scoreboard and installation of that scoreboard with Baseball Booster Club, who is going to donate $5,000 for this purchase. We also have four panels that we are going to sell some advertising on the bottom of that scoreboard, and I believe that that will generate $2,000 over the course of the first two years of usage, and additional revenue in the future through that advertising. We did have conversations with some vendors early about more inclusive involvement in this, but that was not going to net us any more than where we currently are. So, we decided to go the route of de-advertising panels on the bottom of the scoreboard for future revenue.
All right, thank you. I know in the past Coca-Cola would sponsor the whole scoreboard, or Pepsi, but I guess times have changed, so.
Those days are over, I do believe.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just a comment. I know, Mr. President, you said this has been...you have been working with the Baseball Association, and they have approved this concept or the layout, and are part on board with the process, correct?
Councilmember Nelson, that is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call. I thought you were raising your hand. Wait and pull your...
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Item number 11 was to accept the bid and award a contract for project number 1504. This is also a resolution. Staff brought to the committee the acceptance of the bid...for approval, the acceptance of the bid and award the contract to Dunix Incorporated for project number 1504. Our staff advertised for bids in the path overlay and striping of North 7th Street Path, Hadeen Park Path, Robins Island Beach Path, and the Lakeland Drive Path on May 8. Bids were opened on 26th of May, and one bid was received for that project from Dunix Incorporated in the amount of $171,492.75. Our discussion included the preference of paths created in the roadway to allow single maintenance of the street and path together. Again, after some discussion, a motion is made seconded and passed, and I will introduce the resolution to accept the bid and award the contract to Dunix Incorporated for project number 1504 in the amount of $171,492.75, and authorize our mayor and administrator to execute the necessary documents.
Second.
The resolution has been introduced and seconded. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Item number 12, our last item, was a discussion of miscellaneous items. This was for information only. Our engineer noted that the public works staff has started pothole patching. Precision concrete is fixing a trip hazard at Taunton Stadium before the Stingers' first game, which was on the 20th of May, and the tentative grand opening for the auditorium was scheduled for June 25, but due to scheduling conflicts, it may be delayed to a later date. It will be delayed to a later date. Potholes along 2nd Street Southeast between Minnesota Avenue and Olene Avenue are to be addressed. The committee requested Mr. Brizendine present an update on the Ride Respect Return Yellow Bike Program, and do you have something for us, Steve?
Member Christensen, yes. I'll give you an update on the yellow bike program. On May 15, we unveiled the yellow bike program, which is a bike share program in conjunction with the mayor's bike ride. We started the year with 42 bikes placed at approximately 20 yellow bike racks throughout the community. The origin of this program began about a year ago, as the CVB ship program for Canyon High and Rinville Counties, along with Community Ed and Rec, started discussing ways to get more people on bicycles. We had been giving away bikes through the Wheels for Kids Program that was funded by the Quanis Club three years ago, and had some great success, as we've given away about 100 bikes in that three-year span. And it seemed like this bike share program seemed to be a natural extension of that bike giveaway program. We solicited some assistance from Jenny O. Turkey Store this winter, and Hormel and Jenny O. Turkey Store donated $5,000. We were able to invest that $5,000 in refurbishing bicycles that had been impounded throughout the city over the last couple of years, and to date, we have, like I said, refurbished 42 bicycles. Rick's Cycling Shop has a number more. Our goal is to try to get approximately 75 to 100 bikes on the road this summer through the yellow bike program. I don't know if I mentioned the Jenny O. Turkey Store donation was $5,000. So, those dollars are what have been funding the refurbishing of those bikes to date. We also partnered with about a dozen community businesses in town to get the yellow racks at locations other than public locations like the city parks and schools. So, we've got a number of partners in this venture. We would certainly appreciate the assistance of the public if they get on these bikes and there's repairs that need to be made, flat tires and things like that, because those things will happen. We do have two bike repair stations, one at the Trailhead, and one at Lakeland...not at Lakeland, at North Swanson Ballfield. Those bike repair stations were donated by the ship program through Rinville and Canyon High County. We also have summer staff relocating those bikes on a weekly basis to try to balance out where they are located around town, instead of all the bikes being located at one or two racks. To date, I think it's been a successful program. I see the yellow bikes throughout the community. I know there's a lot of skepticism about this type of program, as they're open bikes. We do not lock them. We have signs on each one of the yellow racks. And Mr. Christensen, you mentioned what our theme is, and our theme is Ride, Respect, and Return. So, by all means, ride the yellow bikes, respect them, because they have been refurbished, and they aren't the newest bikes, but they do work. And if you find them in disrepair, call the Community Ed and Rec office, and we'll go pick them up and get them repaired. And by all means, please return them to one of the yellow racks as well, because the next person can't use it if it's not there. And that's my update.
Steve, could you tell us where some of these racks are located? You said there's approximately 20 of them within the city?
Yes, I'll try not to forget any of the partners that we've got. Ridgewater College, Minwest Technology Campus, the county purchased three for their building out at the Health and Human Resources...Health and Human Services Building, their building downtown where the licensing is at, and also the public library is where the county put three of them. We've got one at the Goodness Coffee Shop. We've got one at Heritage Bank. We've got one at the YMCA. We've got one at the Best Western, one at the CVB, one at the Super 8, one at the Candy Mall. I know I'm going to forget some of these. We've got them at Miller...at Jefferson Learning Center. I'm going to go brain-dead on the rest of this, but we also got them at the parks of Swanson. We put one at the Trailhead, and we've got one at Swanson, and we've also got one at Taunton Stadium, along with some of the schools.
So, are the ideas to...you could take it from one of the racks, and you could ride it to another one, and unload it at that rack? It doesn't have to come back to the same one, correct?
Exactly, exactly. And we do find them around town. I'm guessing people ride them home, and that's fine and dandy, as long as they're in good repair. We'll stop and pick them up if we have to. But we have been called of them being left at various locations, because that's, you know, people will take them and ride them to wherever their location might...or destination might be. And like I said, we've got summer staff that will go around and relocate these, and we'll leave them out on the racks till the end of September, mid-October, and then we'll go gather them up again and refurbish them next winter is our goal, and put them out again next spring.
The mayor handed me a note that there's one at Selvig Park also.
There is one at Selvig Park. Good catch, Mayor, and that was sponsored by...if Warren was here, that was sponsored by Haggen Orthotics, as a matter of fact.
Okay. Now, the one at the Trailhead, is that...can people take a bike there and go to Spies and come back, or is that...
Absolutely. Our goal is to try to expand that, and we've had a lot of meetings with some of the folks north of here, and as this program is successful, our goal might be to replicate that in those communities as well.
I see. Well, it sounds like a good idea, and I see people using them. I've seen several bikes downtown being used. Any other questions from the council? Dennis?
Steve, I would just say, this is a tremendous success that you have spearheaded and put together for our community. There's more buzz out there in the community about these yellow bikes. People are really excited about them, and I have every confidence that it's going to grow and be a really tremendous asset for our community. So, good job for getting that all put together.
Thank you very much. There has been a lot of attention. We have been contacted by many communities throughout the state, as both West Central Tribune and the Star Tribune had articles about this. We also presented at the Pedal Minnesota Conference, along with Nice Ride Minnesota, which is a little intimidating national organization like they are with bike rental programs that are just a little bit different than this. But they were very excited about our program, and happy to hear that we're putting people on bikes more often as well.
Any other questions, comments? If not, that was the last item in our committee meeting, and I would move to file the minutes.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to file the minutes. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to the dog park, I heard on the radio today, there's a contest. You're supposed to sign up on the computer, and I did that. There's a lot of communities that are shooting for, it's a $325,000 grants and a major $100,000. So, I'd encourage everyone to vote, so that would help this group get a dog park. But I don't know the email.
Well, it's Petsafe is the site, and if you go to Petsafe, then it will say Vote for Your Dog Park. There's over 300 dog parks that are on there. I spent about an hour yesterday on the website, and we're doing very well, but we can't let up. Today, this afternoon, I looked at it. We were at 8:54. I don't know, Lori, do you have an updated number?
8:75, when I left the work here about 5:00.
So, we're at about 8:75. We have one down in Florida that is well over 1,000, and so this first section will get us into the next round, into the finalist round. So, we have to be in the top 15, right? So, we have to be in the top 15 to make that. So, if you're out there listening tonight, get on your computer, go to Petsafe. You can vote twice a day. You can vote once on their website, and then also once on their Facebook page. So, there's...each citizen can vote twice. So, thank you for that. Nice plug. Councilmember Nelson.
You can also go on Facebook to KC Dog, and they have the link there to go to, too, so.
Correct. Our local dog group is called KC Dog. If you go to their site, they'll link you over there to both sites. So, thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Additional discussion? All of them in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Labor Relations, Councilmember Dawkin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Labor Relations Committee met Wednesday, the 27th of May, 4:45, in Conference Room Number 1, City Office Building. Those present were Chair Ahman, councilmembers Dawkin, Anderson, and Christensen. Others present were Mayor Calvin, Councilmember Nelson, interim city administrator, Halliday Finance Director Olkens, Public Works Director Christensen, Senior Technician Whitman, Administrative Assistant Janelle Summers, and David Little, West Central Tribune. The meeting was called to order again at 4:45. Item number two was a memorandum of agreement for salary compensation. As referred from April 29, 2015, Labor Committee...Labor Relations Committee meeting, the committee considered a memorandum of agreement to the department head's first-line supervisors confidential employees contract whereby Section 14.2 of Article 8 allows for a temporary one-time pay adjustment for additional duties assigned. Assigned, Senior Engineering Technician Lyndon Whitman assumed the role and additional responsibilities of the engineering department for the city of Womer for the time period of September 14, 2013, to March 13, 2014, approximately 18 months during the absence of Public Works Director...of a Public Works Director. The matter has been discussed and approved by the bargaining unit, and it is staff's recommendation to approve the memorandum of agreement. The question was raised whether or not the memorandum of agreement had been approved by Labor Attorney Frank Madden. Councilmember Christensen made a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement as presented contingent upon the document...the document by Labor Attorney Frank Madden. It was seconded, and the motion carried, and so I will move that this motion be acted on tonight.
Second. Kevin, have we heard back from the city attorney, or the county attorney, or the labor attorney?
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, I did just check my phone to see if there was any update, and I asked Labor Attorney Madden if he could make the deadline. We certainly sent him this memorandum of agreement for Mr. Whitman. He subsequently asked for Mr. Peterson's. That was done about a month and a half ago. And although there's another item here that he had to make comment on, he made that one, and he did not make comment on this one.
Mayor Calvin.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just a clarification, if I'm reading these dates right, dates right. It says September 14, 2013, to March 13, 2014, but it talks about it being 18 months. I believe that timeframe is only six months, so, isn't it?
Yeah, I think that date's supposed to be the 12th, isn't it? I'm sorry, 2012? 2012 is the date that's supposed to be, September 14, 2012. Council, what do you wish to do here?
Take a motion to table until we hear from the labor attorney.
There's a motion to table. Is there a second to the motion? Second. Okay, all of those in favor, signify. All of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All same sign?
Aye.
The motion is tabled.
Item number three, public comment. Steve Gardner, 2645 Southwest 19th Avenue, commented on the agenda item, open forum protocol, and the need to discuss it. He felt it appropriate for the committee members to make comments about members of the general public who exercised their right to speak. The council should carefully consider the effects of limiting effective speech by the public at any meeting. The council needs to begin the healing process that the city so desperately needs. Jessica Roloff, 3501 Southeast 15th Avenue, commented that there are times people don't agree with what's said during the open forum. Parameters need to be set to maintain civility, yet people should be given the right to be heard. Item number four, open forum protocol information. Councilmember Ahman brought forth information from the mayor's handbook, published by the League of Minnesota Cities, along with examples of open forum protocol from several other cities. The committee discussed several examples, including limiting the amount of people who speak, allowing citizens to speak twice a year, having open forum at the committee level, and also limiting it to 15 minutes and not recording any audio or video for this portion of the agenda. What direction the committee wanted to take on the matter was discussed at length. It was the consensus of the members that it is a sensitive issue, and future discussion and input is necessary. This matter was for information only. Item number five, League of Minnesota Cities training. Interim City Administrator Kevin Halliday informed the committee that he, Mayor Calvin, and Councilmember Steve Ahman have met with the League of Minnesota Cities staff members, Dan Greenswig, to discuss council staff training. Correspondence is presented from the league, gave a brief description of one of their presentations, which covers the legal rubric for the council operation and touches on individual council roles and liability. The presentation summarizes the open meeting law and the data practice law. Interim City Administrator Halliday presented a proposed schedule whereby the council can attend the presentation prior to a council meeting with a meal in between, and that the city staff would have training sessions earlier in the day. Councilmember Anderson made a motion to authorize staff to work with the League of Minnesota Cities to coordinate training sessions with staff and council, and work out the logistics. Councilmember Christiansen seconded, and the motion was carried, so I would move this motion.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All of them in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. The motion carries.
Item number six, interim city administrator salary compensation. This is a motion. Mayor Calvin requested the committee consider compensation for additional work assignment for the job duties of interim city administrator taken on by city clerk Kevin Halliday. The city council appointed city clerk Halliday as interim city administrator on April 16, when he took on the critical and immediate job duties of the city administrator while continuing the duties of city clerk. The proposed combined salary of $118,750 annualized, or seven twelfths of $26,835, or $15,650, until the hour a new city administrator is hired. The question was raised by councilmember Anderson as to how much of the actual city administrator job is being done by Mr. Halliday, such as contract negotiations, counseling employees. Councilmember Anderson made a motion that the mayor and interim city administrator look at the current city administrator's job description, and see what duties apply to the interim city administrator, and bring this information to the next meeting. Council member Christensen seconded the motion, which carried. Item number seven.
A motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I would move the motion.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion.
Just a clarification on what the motion actually is.
The motion...
As it reads in here.
Would you like me to restate it? Councilmember Dawkin?
The question was raised by councilmember Anderson, is how much of the actual city administrator's job is being done by Mr. Halliday, such as contract negotiations and counseling employees. Councilmember Anderson made a motion that the mayor and interim city administrator look at the current city administrator's job description, and see what duties apply to the interim city administrator, and bring this information to the next meeting. Councilmember Christensen seconded the motion, which carried, and I guess that's what I'm moving.
Would you like me to clarify?
As long as it's as written here, then I'm fine. That's...
The way...Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but the motion is that the mayor and interim city administrator look at the city administrator's job description, see what duties apply to the interim city administrator, bring it to their next labor meeting. Additional discussion? All of them in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion does carry. The motion does carry.
Item number seven, safety boots footwear policy, and this is a motion. Interim city administrator Kevin Halliday informed the committee that members of the safety committee have voiced concerns with the ever-increasing cost of steel-toed boots required to be worn by some employees. The adopted policy allows a city cost share of $125, which is a rate that is over a decade old. Staff recommends increasing the rate to $175, as it appears to cover local costs of quality boots, with the exception of super sole ice boots worn by ice arena staff. There was a motion and second that the city cost participation for safety footwear be changed from $125 to $175, contingent upon the approval of Labor Attorney Frank Madden. That is not a negotiated item with the labor contracts, and that was made, and so I introduce that, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Kevin, can you give us an update?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Labor Attorney Madden had no conflict whatsoever with any labor contracts, but he did make a recommendation that there's some minor confusion between the policy asking to pay 100% and then the supervisors' report limiting it 25. And his recommendation was to amend Personnel Policy 6.7 to clearly list, striking out the 100%, that the city will pay up to $175 toward the cost of the protective equipment, safety shoes or boots. And that would be the clearer recommendation to make the policy concise.
Councilmember Dockin, would you like to amend your motion?
I would.
I'd second that.
Will you read that back to us, Kevin, or would you like me to read it?
I believe the motion should be to amend Personnel Policy 6.7 to list the cost sharing of personal protective equipment to be up to $175 per shoe slash boots.
Seeing none, all of them in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion does carry.
Item number eight, Prosecutor Legal Services, and this is a resolution. Interim city administrator Kevin Halliday brought forward for consideration a contract for city prosecutor legal services received from Anderson Law Offices. The issue was raised of having the city's criminal attorney provide civil legal services to enforce local ordinances, including but not limited to the enforcement of exterior storage zoning violations. Mr. Halliday has contracted the city civil law firm, which concurred, allowing the criminal attorney to proceed with some civil code enforcement makes sense. The cost to the city is an hourly rate of $125. The agreement has been reviewed by city attorney Roberts Scott, and I will introduce this resolution.
Second. Motion's been introduced and seconded. Kevin, could you tell me the hourly rate that we normally are paying for civil?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I believe the hourly rate for Flaherty and Hood is $105 per hour.
And this is 125?
That is correct.
Okay. Additional discussion? All of them in favor of the motion, or, I'm sorry, roll call?
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Item number nine, League of Minnesota Cities Training Course, and this is for information only. Councilmember Amon announced that if any member of the council has a specific courses they would like included in training sessions, they should contact either him or the mayor with that information. And if there is no further business to come before this council meeting, I would move to file these minutes.
Second. Motion made and seconded to file the minutes. Discussion. Seeing none, all of them in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion does carry. Next, we have consideration of City Park Special Event by On-Sale Liquor Licenseholder Baker Creek Eatery. Kevin?
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, as you can suspect, Wilmorfest is holding a beach party at Robins Island for this year's summer celebration, and there is a City Park Special Event permit by the On-Sale Liquor Holder Baker's Creek Eatery, and they are having that in the main parking lot on Robins Island adjacent to the beach party with the band that's scheduled. This alcohol permit has been reviewed by the Community Ed and Recreation Board last Friday, or May 22, rather, and they have approved it, and it is staff's recommendation that we approve this beach party special liquor event.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the event. Discussion. Roll call?
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Okay, next we have announcement of council meeting dates. Finance.
Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee will meet Monday, June 8, 4:45.
Public Works, Public Safety?
June 9, Tuesday, 4:45.
Labor.
I did not get any indication from...
I think we have to meet.
You have to take action on the fire chiefs here, so we will have a couple items.
Okay. And the date would be then, Mr.?
June 10.
June 10. Wednesday, 5, Conference Room 1.
Okay. Community Development.
We are not meeting.
Okay, no meeting? Anything else for the good of the order?
I'll move to adjourn.
No, hold on. Kevin?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, one more potential meeting. I wonder if you could possibly find a date. As you know, the request for proposals for the firm to hire the city administrator are all due June 15, which is the next council meeting date. We listed, it's not firm, but we listed we'd make a decision within about 10 days, and so I want to know if there's a possibility with your calendars here that you could find a date that would work, that we could meet and review the proposals. I've had two or three firms already call. I anticipate they will make the deadline.
Okay, council, I thought that that was going to go back to labor, and we were going to have a full labor meeting specially called to review. That is how I had remembered it. I don't know, does anybody else remember that conversation?
15, 20, 24? We could meet another labor meeting on the 24th, but call it a labor full council and post it so?
Well, if you did, if you had the council meeting on the 15th, and then you went to that Wednesday, that would push you out...
The 24th?
No, the next one, 17.
The 24th? Well, the 17th, two days later?
Two days later.
That would also work, either one.
Would staff have enough time to put the packages together?
Mayor Calvin?
Yes.
Our councilmember...
Is it possible that you can send it out so we can make sure everyone is there, so we can have two dates to choose from to do that?
If we're not prepared tonight, we could do it that way.
But I don't think it takes a full council to select who the firm's going to be.
Depends on if you're going to do it as a labor meeting, what else is on the labor thing.
Well, that might be your only labor item for that night.
Probably would be.
I mean, that's the only thing we would do that night, and then if you didn't have another regular labor, why wouldn't you want to do that, why wouldn't you want to do that on the 24th? Just do your regular labor business then.
Sure.
That's fine.
So it's tentative to plan it for the 17th?
Okay.
Full council labor. That'll be the only item on the agenda, and then follow-up. Your fire chief thing will be done by then?
That'll be June 10.
Correct.
That'll be the next official one.
Does that work for everybody?
I don't know.
Yep.
That's the tip.
17th, right?
That's what I said.
I mean, if somebody's opposed to that, I mean, let's... Anything else for the good of the order?
Move to adjourn.
Second. We are adjourned.